Welcome to the Design Review Commission meeting. Today is Wednesday, June 2. Before we proceed, I would like to establish your quorum. I'm gonna call each commissioner by the order I see on my screen. Commissioner Kirik.
Present.
Commissioner Blockus.
Here.
Commissioner Harding.
Here.
And then I got a friend got calling now, so okay, Commissioner Bishop.
Here.
Great, and myself, we have a five out of five, we do have a quorum. Thank you. Items for tonight, special item. Oh, first, I would like to say if there's any public comments that that's not on agenda, please raise your hand on this Zoom, so the CD staff, Guido, or someone will arrange your time to speak. The next one is a special item, election of Chair and Vice Chair. So with anyone, it's been more than a year, anyone would like to nominate, oh, so Vice Chair, Frank Bishop would be the Chair for the coming year, right?
Yes.
Okay, so all we need to do is to have someone nominate to elect a Vice Chair for the coming year.
Do we take them separately or as a slate?
Doesn't matter. I think the city attorney would like them separate.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's let's do it separately. So I nominate Frank to be the Chair. A second.
Right, just vote on it. Start with Commissioner Blockus.
Aye.
And Commissioner Kirik.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
And myself, I, does Frank need to vote on it? Commissioner Bishop need to vote on it?
No, he doesn't, I mean, you have you have.
Okay, all right.
Is he, but is he gonna, is he accepting it, Frank? We need to hear from you.
It will be difficult for me, but yes, I will, I will do my best.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, motion approved, four to zero. Thank you. All right, the next one is the, see, anyone would like to nominate the Vice Chair?
I nominate David Blockus for Vice Chair.
A second.
Okay. Time to vote, I'll start with Frank.
Yes.
To vote. Okay, Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
Commissioner Kirik.
Aye.
And myself, aye. Do you accept the Vice Chair, Commissioner Blockus?
Sure.
All right.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, yeah, motion approved, four to zero, thank you, congratulations. All right, so the the Chair, the new Chair is gonna take over the the meeting from this moment.
Okay.
Chair.
Michael.
Yeah, Chair Bishop, okay, all right.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so Guido, I didn't expect to do this tonight, so I will do my best here remotely. So, looking at the agenda, I think the the first item here is to approve the minutes, is that correct, from the last meeting?
That's correct.
Yes.
Someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
I second.
Someone second, second. Okay, so I guess I'll, I can't see everyone on my phone, so I will do my best to take the role here. Commissioner Kirk.
You muted, you muted.
Who is?
Sorry, I, sorry about that, Frank. Commissioner Kirik votes aye.
Commissioner Ma.
Aye.
Commissioner Blockus.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
And Commissioner Bishop is aye also, so with that, we will approve the minutes from the last meeting. Okay, item three on the calendar looks to be the project at 720 Park Hills Avenue. Would the would the staff like to open with a report on that project?
Yes, Steve Golden will be giving the presentation.
Sure, I'm gonna keep my video off, because I I think I'm having some low bandwidth issues, so hopefully this will work, I'm gonna share my screen right now, just let me know when you can see it. Can everybody see the screen?
I can.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this is a designer of the application for a first and second story addition and remodel to an existing two-story residence. The project includes adding 188 square feet at the first story and 619 square feet to the second story. This lot is located on the west side of Park Hills Avenue, just north of Ben Row Drive, and this is in that south of Fremont Avenue area. This neighborhood is best defined as a consistent character neighborhood according to the city's residential design guidelines. This this neighborhood, the the commissions had a number of additions and second second story additions in this neighborhood over the years. The houses primarily have sort of this Cape Cod style with a steep pitch side facing gables. They have very similar front yard setbacks, similar exterior materials, which include primarily wood siding with brick, low low eve lines along the front, and and they were all kind of part of an original sort of tract housing that was developed in the 1950s. Just again, kind of the neighborhood context, there are a lot, and sorry, for Frank, I'm on page three now of the presentation. So there are a lot of existing second story homes in this area. Some of these houses originally had some very small second story rooms primarily above the garages, and then over the years, people have accentuated those second floors with various forms of dormers or gables to increase those the second story spaces. So on this slide, you can see, I'm putting my pointer on the on the parcel here, and, oh, sorry, wrong side, over here, which is labeled as a project site, and you can see it's 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 very surrounded by two-story houses already. These were pictures that were provided by the applicant, again, this, the characteristic of these houses showing those original steep pitches, and again, sort of various forms of of the additions with with dormers or other types of gables to to get that that second story in there. But the characteristics of these neighborhoods or this neighborhood has has stayed very similar over the years. You can see in the, all of these houses have that horizontal wood siding, which is a predominant characteristic of this neighborhood, and the the house that's before you has that characteristic and is gonna continue that that type of material. With regards to the the site, moving on to slide five, Park Hills, the roadways to the left-hand side here, so it's a little bit kind of oriented along the the slide here. The lot is 75.5 feet in width, so it does qualify as a narrow lot under the zoning ordinance. So with these with these narrow lots, the side yard setbacks is 10% of the lot width for the first story, and then you add seven and a half feet for the second story setback in addition to that first story. So the existing right side of the of the first story is 10.1 feet, which complies with the 7.5-foot first story side yard setback, but the second story on the right-hand side is 14.5 feet, which does not comply with the required 15-foot second story side side yard setback along that right-hand side. However, the plans do show that less than 50% of the existing floor is being modified, and structurally, they're not making modifications to the exterior walls on that right-hand side, so they can maintain that non-conforming setback on that second story on the right-hand side. Other setbacks of the residents will be in compliance with the minimum standards. The left-hand side, it actually exceeds the the minimum setback standards. The front setback is is just just beyond that 25-foot required front yard setback, and then the second, sorry, the rear yard setback, it's at just over 49 feet, which which exceeds the the 25-foot setback. Again, the original house was built in 1954, and according to the building permit records, the second story was added in 1969. We don't have any plans, so it's assumed that that second story, as it is today, is is how it is permitted. Moving on to the sixth slide and the front elevation, on the top of the slide is the existing front elevation, and the bottom diagram is the proposed elevation. The architect has kind of shaded in gray that the new area as opposed to the existing area. You can kind of see the existing second story on the top part of that slide, that roof line is just poking up above that tall ridge line. So that's being maintained, and then the addition for this residence is primarily in the central part of the structure and towards the left. So those new smaller gables on the second story in the middle, and there is a new covered porch in the front with that horizontal eve line, which breaks up that two-story element that they're adding, and then there's an addition to the left front side here. Again, another kind of non-conforming issue to point out, although can be maintained, because they're not gonna be touching it, is the daylight plane, you can see in the the bottom portion of this slide, the the proposed front elevation that that the existing structure does have some non-conformities with the daylight plane, but they're not structurally modifying that, so they're they're able to just maintain that non-conformity. The plate heights of the second story is gonna be eight height, eight feet in height, which matches the the first story. So that's pretty consistent with that neighborhood. Moving on to slide number seven, this is the rear, again, existing on the top, proposed on the bottom. Nothing of great importance to note here, just that they're kind of matching that that gable in the back with the existing gable. The window placement of the existing windows, they're maintaining and adding windows in the in the rear of that new addition on the rear. Moving on to the eighth slide, the left elevation. You can see here, again, the portion that's being added towards the front and then the rear, but as far as the left-hand elevation goes, they're not proposing any additional second story windows. And so just maintaining the existing second story windows, that's that's kind of positioned further back from the property line that's existing. Again, eight-foot plates on the first floor and on the the second floor. Similarly, on the the right-hand elevation on slide nine, again, the shaded area, you can see this, the, from the right-hand side view, the only element that's being added to is in the in the front portion or to the left side of this frame. No, no additional second story windows proposed on the side, the second story side, or actually on this whole elevation, there's no additional side-facing windows. Just going back to the site plan again, they they did not, they did not include any specific landscaping plan, other than the site plan, that adds the existing landscaping along the sides. They are proposing to maintain the existing landscaping, since this is primarily adding that second story and 188 square feet to the first story, which is very minimal. You can see where there's a lot of smaller trees along the left-hand side. The the applicant did provide some photos, and those were included as an attachment showing the view, the sightlines from the second story. So they are adding as lettered A in this site plan, and labeled in the, they call them the tree planting schedule, they might be more shrubs and trees, but the pittusporum, they're proposing six pittusporum plants on the left, two on the left-hand side, and then four to the kind of the left rear portion. So one of the conditions that staff is recommending is to include some additional planting on the right-hand side. There are some, there are existing views into that right abutting neighbor's property, which are, should be mitigated with some additional screening, so staff did recommend a condition of approval to include more pittusporum plantings on the right-hand property line. The applicant did submit correspondence from for the neighbors, including the abutting properties on either side, and then, I believe, one across the street and one other property owner in the neighborhood. They were all in favor of the project with, they didn't share any other concerns, and staff did not receive any other correspondence with regards to this this application. So with that, I can answer any questions you have. The applicant is available to answer questions, I don't think they, they don't have a formal presentation, but I think they would like to speak and use their time doing so. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of this project, subject to the findings and conditions contained in the staff report. And again, I'd be happy to answer any question.
Okay, thank, thank you, Steve, good, good presentation. So commissioners, anyone have a question for Steve?
I have a question. Steve?
Sure.
Oh. I noticed on the the drawing, there are a few areas being crowded, I understand that the the architect, you know, revision during the staff planning review process. Is there any change, I'm curious about the the cloudy area at the front porch? If you look at the proposed front elevation on A4.
Yeah.
The porch being crowded, can you describe what kind of a revision has been made to the porch?
Yeah, so there were several revisions that this project went through, I actually was not the original planner, so I don't know all of the details of the discussion, but when I picked it up, I believe this, and I'll use my pointer, but this more vertical window with that gable on the left-hand side of the front elevation, it it kind of extended all the way to, it didn't have this horizontal eve line that that kind of covered porch area, so there was more of a two-story wall appearance, and so this this larger porch or wider porch would have added to kind of break up that that second story from the first story.
Got it, got it, okay, right, thank you.
And I think, yeah, and I think, I could be wrong, the architect is available who can answer maybe those more intricate details about, you know, the other cloud, I think these these the the pitches of these roofs came down a little bit, they're now 412 pitch, but I think they were a little bit deeper before. They were originally flat, I believe, and then they went through different variations of of pitches in there, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Steve, that's all I have.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, well, hearing none. Well, Steve, you said that the architect or owner didn't have a presentation, but would they, would they like to speak on behalf of the project as a, as a next step?
Yes, briefly.
Sure, so. So hello, I'm, my name is Gautam Golwala, and this is my wife, Shilpa Narwade, and we are the owners of 1720 Park Hills. We moved here in 2018, and this time, living here, just to get to know the place, we really love the neighborhood, love the house. We have two children, two boys, 15 and 13-year-old, and we have a new sedition to the family, who's a one-year-old lad, and he loves the backyard, so we really want to be staying here for a long, long time, and the last couple of years, we've gotten to know the house well, and you know what works for us, what doesn't work for us. Taken that time, and now we've come up with this way to try and expand the living area a little bit. And the primary thing that we were after was to create that bedroom on top, which allows us to, it's a master bedroom where we would stay as a family, the kids in the rooms next to us, and that leaves the downstairs bedroom as a guest room for whoever is visiting. That was the primary driver. And yeah, happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you, any any questions for the owner from the commissioners?
No.
No, looks like a good project.
Okay, hearing, hearing your questions. This part's a little difficult, Guido, do we have anyone from the public, is that, is that the next section that we'll go through?
It's up to you, Chair, Chair Bishop, but usually, usually we have the architect also say a few words, but that's up to you, as the Chair.
Oh, I I already invited him, is he there also, sorry?
I'm here, if you, I could say a few things, or if you can hear me.
Yes.
We can hear you, so if you'd like to do that, and then after you conclude, if any of the commissioners have a question, we'll have them address the questions to you, okay, please proceed.
Okay, yeah, just, I'll just say a couple of things. Do you have the plans in front of you, commissioners?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, I I just wanted to point out that that this existing house, if you look on sheet A3, where there's the existing floor plan, you can see that the current house has a real flaw, where the the master suite is is on the lower floor, and the stairway up to the second story where their children's bedrooms are, is all the way across the house. So you have to, you have to go all the way through the house, up the stairs, and back again to get to the bedrooms. So it's really not a good layout for a family, so as the owners mentioned, really the driving goal of this was to get the the master suite upstairs adjacent to the kids' rooms, and to move the stairway to to a more central location, and free up a guest room downstairs. So you know, that, it was really a fundamental need for this house to make it really work as a family house. And then the, just the other second thing I wanted to mention was, in terms of privacy, you know, we're always really concerned about second-story windows overlooking neighbors. But in this case, you know, we already have two bedrooms with large windows looking out in each direction to the sides and to the rear. And so when we added another bedroom upstairs, we we only added one more window facing the rear, the same direction the existing ones do. We didn't have any additional windows on on the sidewalls, and then we added the pittusporum to to better block the views, not only from the new window, but from the existing windows. So I I think in the in the end, the privacy will actually be improved from the existing situation. And then finally, I'll say, the clouds, that the the main difference that that this house went through during the planning processes was we started out with a slightly more contemporary look, and the planners didn't think that would really match with the neighborhood, so we we went back to a more traditional gabled roof and a large porch, and I think that works nicely. So any, I can answer any questions, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the commission or the architect?
No.
Hi, I actually have a question, I have a, sorry. Chair, I have a question. So I have two questions. You mentioned about you, when you worked with the previous planner, there's a VAST style, you know, keeping the existing style or the more modern or contemporary. The, I noticed the garage, the new garage door, it's it's a contemporary en masse, finished, dark en masse with a glass, set and edge glass, so that that kind of looks a contemporary. I just want to understand more about what you have in mind, in terms of how to match, you know, using some contemporary garage door with the existing style. Can you explain about that?
Well, it's, the the frame is dark, kind of like, like a dark, like a wood, and the the glass is is etched, so you can't see through it. So it it's kind of a, I mean, yes, it's a little bit more contemporary than a, than just a kind of a standard roll-up door, but we, you know, we're, we're we're doing a couple of items that are slightly contemporary, like the the Muntin pattern in the windows is a little little more contemporary than than the traditional.
Okay, so are you, are you replacing all the window with the new, with the darker frame, or what kind of, what color frame of the window gonna be?
Yeah, it's, it's all the same, the the dark. Oh, wait a minute. I don't have the pictures with me.
The attachment D showing the window with a white trim and the window, window frame.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's right, the 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 new windows are matching the exist, the color scheme was matching, so the the garage doorway, we have it now, is is a little unique.
Okay, okay, and then my my, the last question is, have you explored, I know with the with the previous planner, about how to mitigate the mitigate the stairway, I know you guys already did it by stretching the over the the porch roof. Any other way to mitigate, have you guys discussed? With the stairway being.
Yeah, the main, the main thing we did was we reduced the size of the window and and extended the porch, so that the porch roof broke up the the one two-story element we had. But I what, I must mention that that the location of that stairway is 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 very important for the owners, because of the, one of the goals in this house was to to bring it more in conformance with the principles of VASTU, and that one of their primary goals was to get that stairway in the northeast corner, I mean, excuse me, the southeast corner of the of the floor plan. And so that's kind of a fixed element that I couldn't really change, so.
What's, what's the the plate height for the porch, the porch, the plate height? Is it showing about seven and a half or eight feet, something like that?
Yeah, it's slightly, it's slightly under eight feet. Yes. Yes.
All right, okay, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Any other questions from the commission for the architect? Okay, hearing none. Guido, next, next in the sequence here, is there an opportunity for the public before we have our discussion?
Absolutely. And I'll start from the bottom and work my way up, so.
Thank you.
Phone number four oh eight eight oh seven eight five nine one. Are you here for this item or which item are you here for? Okay, next one. Samir, which item are you here for? Are you here for the Park Hill project? No, okay. Richard, I think is the planning commissioner. Let me just verify. Richard, is that you?
Yes, that's me.
Okay, so you're just here to listen in. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Raju, which item are you here for tonight, sir? Okay. Raju, you there?
Yeah, for, for, for the eight five one mannerway.
Okay, sounds good. All right, well, just sit tight, sit tight. And Richard, Nina, Mark Sharon, Mark, did you, were you here for this item, the Park Hill project or?
Uh, no, I'm here for the four 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 for lean.
Okay, sounds good. And I believe everybody is accounted for. So I don't think there's any other members of the public speaking on this item tonight. Chair Bishop?
Okay, thank, thank you, Guido. Then at this point, I'll close the section for public comments. And the commission, I guess, will have our internal discussion. Next, would someone like to open the discussion?
I, I will, I'll go ahead then. Or Jude, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, you go ahead. You go ahead, Michael.
Okay, yeah, I, 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 yeah. I actually like the project and I try to think a way to improve it, you know, further. I understand that the owner's situation with the kids and then the, the existing floor plan with the stair all the way to that back corner, it's very difficult to use. So, and then it's existing house, so you know, any addition modification, it's, it's, it's not easy. But the, other than the style of the house, I think as long as the owner and then, I mean, for remodel addition, I'm not gonna be very picky about the, the garage door. But the, the facade, the front elevation with the stairway, I understand the architect worked with, you know, the previous planner, the current planner, and maybe try the, the number of different ways to mitigate the impact of that stairway, double high stairway being pushed in forward. And looking at this one, I think it's still gonna be impact, but I'm thinking, you know, maybe there's a way to raise the porch roof, because porch roof being so low, even lower than the, than the existing, if you look at the front elevation, that porch is even lower than the left side, that existing plate height. So if we raised that, anyway to raise that porch roof up another foot or even foot and a half, and then somehow try to, you know, mitigate that impacts there, you know, a little bit here and there, I think that's still some improvement. So, so overall, I, I think that I mean, support the project, if we can come up with some kind of further improvement, if we could, I mean, you know, try to explore some other option. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Michael. Jude, did you, did you want to go next?
Uh, sure. Well, I think a few of us have looked at many projects in this neighborhood over the years. This is very, you know, you call it a consistent character, I call it very eclectic. So, you know, and this home, I, you know, it's a challenge to remodel these types of homes. So the architect, I think, did a very good job. Although looking at the roof line, it's really complicated, given what they're trying to do. So as an architect, I appreciate it, but I, I think overall, given what's there currently, this is gonna be a very attractive addition. I, I quasi agree with Michael about the, you know, the impact of the front stair and, you know, but once again, these homes are low scale, low impact, so I'm not, I don't think this will look too out of place, given how it's currently designed. So I won't start tinkering too much with it, because clearly this has been hashed through a, a few times with the previous planner and whatnot. But saying all that, beyond the design, you know, the home is well screened, the pittus forum on the left side of the home really you know, knocks down any concern about privacy, even though there's no windows on that side of the home. So all in all, I, I, I think it's consistent with our design guidelines. I think it's well done as best as it could be, given the situation, and I'm in favor of the project as designed.
All right, thanks, Jude. David, would you like to go next?
Yeah, I agree. These are extremely difficult houses to make look like it isn't an addition or anything like that. The stairway behind the garage, if you haven't been in one, is extremely steep. And then you go upstairs to a small little landing room, and then usually there's a little, this one has a second bedroom that's been added, but usually there's a little walkway. And then you have attic space running the entire length of the garage, the home. And so if you kept the stairway on the far right, you're basically, if you add bedrooms upstairs, making a bowling alley of a hallway to get down to them. So I, I really do like the idea of the stairway in the middle of the house. I do think there is a little bit of a visual distraction with the where the stairway is located, but I fully understand it. And I think, given the constraints of Park Hill's homes, I think it makes a lot of sense with what they're doing. I think, and I may be incorrect, but the porch itself, I think for late afternoon sun is also going to provide a little bit cooling factor for what traditionally has been the living room and then the dining room in the back of the property. So, and I think the, the garage garage door with a lot of window panes or whatnot, opaque window panes make sense, because then you can also, those are quite small garages. And, you know, wouldn't have to light them or anything like that for most part of the day, because if you do have a lot of windows, you can light that small space without actually having to have a light. So I, I support the project as presented.
Great, okay, thank you, David. Sam?
Yeah, I support the project and would vote in favor.
All right, thanks, Sam. So I agree, I think everyone's made good comments here. I think the modifications will actually update the house nicely and still keep it fitting into the, into the neighborhood. So with that, concludes the discussion. If there's no other questions or continuing discussion, would someone like to make a motion on the project?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve design review application twenty, or SC twenty dash zero zero six one seven two zero Park Hills Avenue, subject to the listed findings and conditions.
Okay, thanks, Sam. Could someone second Sam's motion?
Second.
Thank you. I'll take the, take the role then on for a vote. Jude?
I vote aye, yes.
Commissioner Ma?
Aye.
Commissioner Blockus?
Aye.
Commissioner Harding?
Aye.
Uh, thank you. And Commissioner Bishop votes aye as well. So we have a unanimous vote of five in favor of the project, so project approved. Congratulations to the owner and the architect.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. So back to the agenda. Next item is eight fifty one Manor Way. Would staff like to start us with a presentation on this particular project?
Yes, Sean, Sean Gallegos.
Okay, Sean?
Good evening. Let me see, this is moving, one second. Good evening, Chair Bishop and Commissioners. The item before you tonight is a designer view application for a new two-story house. The project includes two thousand five hundred and three square feet at the first story, one thousand two hundred and thirty-one at the second story. This slide provides a schematic rendering of the proposed two-story house. That is provided in your packet. The subject property is located in a diverse character neighborhood as defined the city's residential design guidelines. Along Manor Way, there are primarily one and two-story ranch-style houses that are in similar size, footprint, design characteristics and building scale. In the immediate neighborhood context along Clinton Road, the houses are a combination of low-scale ranches and also larger-scale contemporary houses. Landscaping in, along the frontages are predominantly concrete driveways, varying amounts of grass lawns and mature deciduous and evergreen street trees along the street frontage. This before you is the site plan, which is in your packet. It reflects the footprint of the first story with the dark shaded areas, the second story, and the proposed new screening trees and retention of existing trees. The house is designed to be consistent with development standards for the R one ten district as conveyed in the staff report. The new residence uses a more contemporary-inspired architectural design with flat roof elements at the first story and its simple modern forms. The house includes, features include the flat roofs, large windows, horizontal siding, stucco siding services, metal fascias with soffits and unornamental wall services with limited decorative detailing at the windows or doors. The project is designed eclectically in a way to be compatible with the area with such elements as the flat roof at the first story, the hip roof at the second story, and the horizontal-oriented first and second story to mimic the massing of the immediate neighborhood context to be lower scale in nature. The new structure will have a thirty-foot front yard setback, which is greater than the required twenty-five-foot setback. The design incorporates horizontal siding, which is considered more rustic, more rustic material, and helps to diminish the overall bulk, bulk of the contemporary design. The project has lower wall plates, nine feet at both levels, and a lower overall height of twenty-three feet, twenty-three point seven feet, where twenty-seven feet is maximum permitted height in the district. Along the front elevation, the design overall, staff does believe the two-story design is well proportioned, articulated to reduce overall scale. On the left elevation, on the west side of the structure, there are four windows proposed. Two smaller windows in the master bedroom with six foot two inch sill heights, a large medium-sized window in the master bathroom with a four foot six inch sill height, and a large window in bedroom number three with a three foot two inch sill height. To ensure there are no additional privacy impacts, staff is recommending condition number four to raise the sill height of bedroom number three to a four foot six inch, and staff does believe with the proposed window sill heights, the existing window heights of the, of the taller sill height windows, that the left side will not create unreasonable privacy impacts. On the right side elevation, the applicant's proposing one window in the laundry room with a four foot sill height to ensure that there are no additional privacy impacts, staff is recommending to raise that sill height to four foot six inches, which is the standard for second-story windows on sides. With the small window size and the increased sill height, staff does believe that the window along the right side will not create unnecessary privacy impacts adjacent properties. Along the rear second story, there are two windows in the family room with and breakfast room with sixteen foot, sixteen foot tall sill heights and a two-panel sliding door in the master bedroom, which exits, exits onto a balcony. The balcony size is four foot, complies with the four foot maximum depth and, and, which is recommended under the design guidelines. As a result, it is considered to be passive in nature. A sightline study was provided in sheet P seven. And it shows the nearly thirty-five point five foot setback from the balcony to the property line. It also does reflect the existing evergreen screening trees and the proposed new evergreen screening trees proposed along the rear and side property lines, which staff does believe will obscure sightlines, maintain a reasonable degree of privacy. So staff does believe due to the, due to the significant setback, existing screening and proposed screening, the passive nature of the balcony, that the privacy impacts will be not significant for adjacent properties. There are eleven property, eleven trees on the property and the project is proposing removal of two trees. A list of the, of the trees are provided. List of four trees on the site are provided on attachment C. They're also conveyed in the, on she L one and are available for you to look at in the packet. Since the project includes a new house, a new landscaping area that exceeds five hundred square feet, it will be subject to the city's water efficient regulations. And staff does believe overall, the existing proposed landscaping meets the intent of the city's landscape regulations and street tree guidelines. Within the packet, of course, is examples of the, some of the proposed trees, which includes the camphor trees on the upper right, which will have a potential height of forty feet and width or spread of forty feet. This concludes staff's presentation. Unless there are any questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Nice presentation. Are there any questions for Sean from the commission?
None.
I have a couple.
Is that David?
Yeah, that's me. Question on the, the second story setbacks. Am I reading this incorrect or not understanding it on the right side? The proposed setback is seventeen point one, but the minimum required is seventeen point five? So is this, am I reading it correctly incorrectly?
Is that seventeen point seven, David?
Let me. On, on the front page, it talks at seventeen point one, and I can't, my glasses aren't strong enough to get me, I thought it was on P four setback at seventeen point one as well.
Let me scale that. Let me check really quick. I'm sorry, one second. Yeah. Let me look, I'm sorry about that. I, can I get back to you on that response? I can get that for you.
No worries. And then the second question is the width of the balcony. It's four feet deep, but it looks to be maybe fourteen-ish wide?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay.
And let me get, I'm gonna scale it for you real quick. One second, sorry.
Sean, I have it up on the screen.
Yeah, I mean, it does state seventeen one, but I, I'm hoping, I thought that was an error, but let me see if I somehow missed something. One second.
Well, then I was gonna go, is this a non-conforming legal thing, but it's a brand new house, so.
No, it would not be non-conforming. That would be, if, if it is correct, then it's an error and it should be seventeen six. And so it, it couldn't be approved at that, at that, but I'm gonna scale off the dimension really quick for you, so I can confirm. Soon as the blue beam software comes up, one second.
And then I just have a, a general question that kind of goes back to last week or two weeks ago. We're getting requests for trees to be removed, et cetera, et cetera, that don't look like they really have any impact on the building envelope of the property. Shouldn't that be going to someone else to, to do versus us? My concern would be that if we're saying, yeah, go ahead and remove the tree, then the property, the, the proper body who should be regulating that, we're taking that function out of their hands, and maybe that's what we are to be doing or not?
Sean, while he's looking it up, Commissioner Blockus and Sean can correct me. My understanding that is the role of the DRC.
Okay.
Somebody, somebody shuffling papers, so. It is the role of the DRC to try to protect trees, but also to recommend removal. And there is a provision in the tree ordinance that does allow, as part of a development application, to the, it says the approving body to either recommend removal or protection of trees. So it is within your right as the DRC for the trees, so.
Okay. Well, if anyone else has other questions while Sean looks that up, go ahead and fire away.
I actually have a good question, but Sean is busy. I'm not, okay, maybe, you know, someone else can tell me. Somehow, I'm looking at the, the staff report, agenda, I mean, attachment B is blank. Is it just my PDF reader? Or is, can everyone else see attachment B on the staff? Is it blank or just mine?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Yeah, it does show a blank, but it wasn't blank. I don't know what, yeah, because I just pulled it directly over from the file. One second. Let me give it to you in a second.
Attachment B is blank. Yes.
Yes, it is. Get me.
That is the material board.
Yeah, I mean, this was, I can show you.
So Sean, if you want to just pull it up on the screen to show the DRC.
Yeah, I could show them right now.
Cool.
Yeah, that's what was provided, but I don't know what happened in the scanning. Any reference to Commissioner Blockus's question? I mean, I can only apologize. I mean, the structure is 17.1 and it's, it should be 17.6, so. Unless the, unless the commission is comfortable conditioning the project to, to comply with the 17-foot-six second setback, then the other alternative is to continue it if it doesn't meet the minimum setback of 17.5 feet, because it is at 17.1 and I've scaled it. So it is less than the standard. And I may have misread it by not potentially zooming in enough, I guess. I don't know.
Well, question would be maybe to any architect who's a commissioner. If we just allow staff to make that adjustment, is there anything that's going to in the four inches or whatever, five inches, going to make a material change to the look and feel of the exterior of the property? My assumption would be no, but I'm not an architect.
Absolutely, David. There would be no visual impact taking five inches out of this house. And that's something we can easily condition and have the architect work directly with staff to make it comply.
And that's, that's what I would recommend.
Okay, so then have we come up with a workaround to continue to move on this tonight, or do we, or do we continue? Where are we, Guido, on this?
If we're, we're ready to, if the applicant and the commission is okay, we can certainly condition the permit to require the, the minimum 17 feet, six inches be, be the second floor setback, so.
Okay, so, so let's, let's do this then for, let's try to continue. Are there any other questions for Sean from the commission? That's where we are still. Commissioners?
No, I don't, we don't, I don't have a question.
No, I'm done.
Okay. Then I guess what we will do next is we'll ask the owner and the architect to present. And as they do that, if they do have a comment in regards to this error of the setback, if they would like to let us know if this is something that we can proceed with, assuming that we will, we will change it to meet the standard. Otherwise, we would need to continue this to additional, additional meetings. So with that, I guess we'll turn it over to the owner and the architect, Guido, and do they have a presentation tonight?
Yeah.
That I'm not sure about. They have to present, so I can unmute them and they can speak for.
Okay, then maybe speak and see if they can answer this question early in their presentation.
Yeah.
Yes, if you can hear me, this is Abby. We're going on the owner and applicant. I do have a brief presentation. If there's time.
Absolutely.
Great. So I'm, I have a, a brief PowerPoint that I'd love to share, and I'm going to try to do that now.
This is, this is Steve Golden, senior planner. Just while Abby's getting that, the other option, which could be, could remedy the situation as well, is it looks like there's a 10-foot, six-inch setback on the first story on the left-hand side, so you, they might be able to shift the resonance over six inches or five inches to make up for it as well.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks, Steve. That, that would be, that would be something we'll definitely look into. Are you able to see my shared screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, well, I just wanted to start by thanking the, the commission and the staff for taking on this application and, and, and giving me time to present as well. Sean covered most of the information on this, on this presentation. Basically, we have four bedrooms and four and a half bathrooms. Three of the bedrooms are on the second floor, and one guest suite is on the first floor. Of the three bedrooms on the second floor, two of them face the front of the building, and only the master faces the back. And as far as the neighborhood characteristics go, it's, it's a quiet residential street, lots of mature trees, which actually made it difficult to take photos of the surrounding houses. I would say the neighborhood is in transition. There are several new homes built on the street. Most of the newer homes are all two-story homes. And as far as the, the style of the existing homes, I would say it's an eclectic mix of styles, ranging from ranch homes to craftsmen, military, and there's at least one modern, modern house on the street closer to Fremont. The lot sizes vary quite a bit with also varying amount of setback. Sean talked about this, and the only thing I've just got to mention is that I added a few more photos on the left side here, and these are not in the immediate area adjacent to the property, but these are two-story homes, a few two-story homes on the, on the street, and this bottom one here is a modern home. So we initially wanted to go with something on the contemporary side, but given the nature, the transitional nature of the, of the street, we decided to make it more transitional in style. So it has, the house has both traditional features such as sloping upper roof, tan stucco instead of, let's say, white or other brighter, bright colors. The windows are, I would say, medium-sized, and they have divided lights. And we're using sort of a warm color cedar siding and natural quartzite stone for some of the, some of the parts of the, the exterior. The modern features, I would say, would be the lower, the flat row, lower roof and the flat fascias. The fast frosted glass garage door seated under the eaves of the soffits and the bronze color trim. The next thing I wanted to actually bring up was this condition number four that actually came up a couple of days ago that I noticed it for the first time, and I didn't really get a chance to talk to staff about this. The condition number four request that we raise the sill height on the side bedroom to number three and the laundry room to four foot six. So what I wanted to sort of point out was that the view from bedroom number three, the side window of bedroom number three is, is blocked by bathroom number three. If you look towards the adjacent house, most of the view is blocked, and really what you see is, it's a tiny, actually, I'm going to go to the next slide first and then come back. This is sort of a, an attempt at trying to show the, the line of sight out of this window. I'm sorry, I ended up with some icons on this, on this page for some reason. I'm not quite sure why they showed up. Anyhow, this is the window in question. And the spacious room number three blocks most of the view towards the back of the adjacent property. And all you see is this portion, which currently is a one-story front porch. And so the rest of the view is of the, of the front yard. This window and the one in front form like a corner window, and that feature is repeated several places on this house. It repeated here. It's repeated on, on the office, which is on the first floor, and also in the back of the house, and as well as actually the front, living room and dining room down here. So raising this one window means that we will also have to raise the window in front with it, which will really like mess up the whole sort of symmetry that's going on with the, with the, with the, with the architecture. So my request was that since it's not really posing a serious privacy concern, and our next-door neighbors are really not concerned with it either, if we could have the staff reconsider the four-foot-six requirement, sill, sill height requirement from this window. Likewise, there was a request for the side window to the laundry room to be also raised. Again, that's depicted by these lines over here, and that's the window in question. It really looks, it's a small, it's a pretty small window to begin with, and this, and the plate height is only seven feet in that room. It's a, another two-foot-by-two-foot window, and it, it looks onto the driveway for the flag lot behind us, and then beyond that, it looks over into the front yard of, of 871 Manor, which is a very deep lot, and the existing house is situated back here with a very large heritage oak tree in the front yard. And there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of foliage and trees on our property, as well as these upright cypress is here, so it doesn't really pose a huge privacy issue, just making that window smaller than two feet high, it just makes it look funny, but if that's, if it has to be done, we can do that. That's basically what I had to present, and if there are any questions, I'll be glad to, to address them.
Okay, well, thank you for the, for the presentation. Commission, any, any questions for the owner?
No, I don't have a question.
No question.
My only question is the, the tree removal, given that we're, we're going to make the decision on it. Can the homeowner just elaborate a little bit more? I'm looking at the report, but just kind of summarize the request for removal.
Absolutely. So we're requesting to remove two trees. One is a palm tree that would be pretty close to the foundation of the new house, and once we excavate and do all, you know, do construction work that close.
Yeah, we don't, probably. We don't need that to, let's talk about the oak. That's.
Yeah. The oak tree, which is on there, which straddles this property and the one next door, has been pruned, has been topped severely over the years. And it goes, obviously, I've only owned this property since the beginning of the year, so it's actually precedes me. And as a result, it has put out all these offshoots that are both relatively healthy. Their report, as, as, as it's indicated in the report, those branches are not very, very strong, and they are very prone to, 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 to dropping. And it's also has some kind of a, I don't know, sycamore, I forget exactly what kind of disease that is, it's also diseased as well. So it was recommended by the arborist to have it removed, and the adjacent neighbor has had also requested its removal as well, because it's, for the most part, on my property. It, so that's really the main reason, and we have agreed to replace it by another similar tree elsewhere on the property. We are planting, I believe, six or seven new trees on the property, and the property as well has quite a bit of healthy hedge, pretty tall hedge, twelve-foot-tall hedge on all three sides, and there's a large heritage oak tree in the front as well that we're obviously going to protect.
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay, I guess that's it for the commission, asking the owner questions. Is the architect here to give a presentation or address the project? And then we, we may have a question or two based on the earlier conversation for the architect.
The architect is here, but I'm going to defer to the owner or builder presentation tonight.
Okay, so I guess then we leave the question open as far as the discrepancy on the, on the setback. There'll be, there'll be no statement from the owner or the architect on that tonight. Is that correct?
I will actually make a comment. That was a total oversight. We were really mainly concerned about the daylight plane issues, and this house went through several revisions and was moved back and forth a few times, and I think that's probably what happened, is my guess, is that it, we just, you know, forgot about the 17 five requirement. It is, it falls under the daylight plane restrictions, but I guess beyond that, we also need to meet that, so that's actually, it was an oversight. It's a laundry room, and I think we can give up a few inches there, and also perhaps shift the building to the left a little bit as well, could, should easily remedy that issue as far as I can see right now.
Okay, all right, well, thank you for that. All right, then, Guido, do we have the public actually to speak on this project? I believe we do. And maybe explain to them what the time limit is for each, each individual to speak.
Sure. Yeah, you have three minutes to speak, and the first person is Cigar Raji.
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank, thank you for the presentation. That's very helpful. It seems like there was a discussion about the 17.1 and 17.5, and I, I'm not an architect, so that will be resolved, I guess, through additional discussion. I do like the fact that there are trees on the rare side, so I'm at 857, and so I do like the fact that as long as those hedges are maintained at a tall length, then that way the second-story balcony on the master will not look straight into one of the bedrooms, a bedroom window there. Other than that, no, no other major comments from my end. I will pass it on to another one of my family household members. But otherwise, just wanted to say good luck with the project and best wishes there.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Guido, did we have another?
Oh, somebody's moving. Let me ask, is Jessica 360, which item are you here for tonight? Jessica? Okay, and I believe that is it for this item.
Okay. I guess at this point we'll close the, the public comments.
Well, we have Abby. Abby is.
Yeah, I have one question.
I'm sorry, who's speaking?
Yeah, this is Raju. And I have one question about the fences around the property. And I have one question about the fences around the property. It's part of your renovation project. Are the fences going to be rebuilt, or there will be current fences?
Before you continue, could you state your name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Raju, R-A-J-U, last name is Joshia, J-O-S-H-I, address is 857 Manor Way.
Okay, thank you.
I can speak to that. My plans are to actually replace any fences that need to be replaced. And it's hard to actually, I think along the right-hand side, the fences look pretty bad, but those will definitely be replaced. And then the ones in the rear are really hard to even see through the, through the heavy hedge, but you probably see them better than I can. If they need to be, if you feel they need to be replaced, I'll be glad to replace them as well.
All right. That was, that was the owner of the property speaking?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I should have managed that a bit better. Okay, Guido, are there any other public speakers?
I do not believe so, Chair Bishop.
Well, let's see, Abby Aaron's, the other Abby wants to speak.
Hold on, Sam. Guido, do we have another Abby that wants to speak tonight?
Yes. This project's lucky enough to have two Abys. And I want the neighbor to know that they've got an incredibly considerate builder, who I've had the privilege of representing over a number of years and working with on both plans and style and interiors. He lives locally, where he and his wife have raised their family. So please don't be concerned that he's coming in and running away. He won't allow loud music, nor abuse of any construction hours. And what I love the most, and for those of you who have seen many of his local homes, is the fact that he doesn't use fake product. His materials are quality, they're natural, and you will be pleased. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Guido, are there any other public speakers?
I think that's it.
Okay. All right, great. Then we'll close the public comment section, and we'll move into the discussion amongst the commissioners. So this time, I'm going to actually ask each one of you individually. So I'm working from a pencil list here. So Jude, would you like to go first and open the discussion, please?
Okay, thank you. Great to know I'm first on the list. So just, just to get this out there in full disclosure, I am an acquaintance of the architect, and the architect's, one of their fam, one of his family members works for me, so, but I don't think that has any effect on my ability to act on this project. Can I ask staff to clarify?
Well, I didn't know that until this meeting. It's probably best if you actually abstain from this boat, just to be careful.
Okay. Well, that's why I'm asking and getting out that. So on that, for that reason, I will recuse myself from this item.
Okay, Jude, thanks for bringing that to our attention. So I'm glad we went first there. So Michael Ma, discussion, would you like to lead us off, please?
Sure, sure, sure. Yeah, I believe, I like the project. You know, it's a transitional contemporary with a mix of material. Yeah, I'm still trying to figure out the, I don't, the, you know, the material, because it's the plank, but I know that the staff shows on the slides. So I think this is the good use of material, and then the, the design also addressed the privacy. I know the balcony in the back, it's, it's four feet by maybe what, 12 or 14. But I noticed in the backyard, I was there today, is a premature shrub along the side yard and then the rear yard. So I don't think there's any potential privacy concern. And I noticed that there's a neighbor's communication from, I don't remember the address, Zon Clinton, across from the flag lot. But I believe that's pretty far away. And then I also noticed that the applicant has outreach to all the adjacent neighbor and tried to address the privacy issue, any concern. So overall, I like the project, you know, the, everything looks good to me, and I'm in support of it. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Michael. Commissioner Blockus, would you like to add to the discussion?
Yeah, the only things that I would add is getting back to the couple of trees, the palm is not an issue, go ahead and remove that. The oak kind of is, and seems like there is, reading this report, that there are ways to keep it. But I guess if both parties are okay to have it removed, and it will be replaced with a similar tree, I'm okay with that. The issue in regards to the conditions, condition, was it four? Yeah, condition.
I believe it was four, yes.
Yeah, windows sill height. I would agree with the applicant to remove that, as long as on the left side of the property, next to the two-story there, where the bedroom window potentially has an obscured view, that, that's also where the tree is being, the oak is being removed, that, you know, we have good screening on that side. And I can't make out what a TX6 is with those little green squares on landscaping plan, what those are. But maybe the app, well, I don't know if we can open it back up to the applicant to explain on that side what the, the level of privacy screening that would be on that side, given returning or keeping the window heights as they had applied. So I'm in favor of the project. I would remove item four of the conditions. And just as long as there's appropriate landscaping on that side, privacy landscaping, and then secondly, that the 17.1 is worked out with staff to make sure that 17.5.
Okay, well, we can add that to our conditions if we get to the motion stage here. So thank you. Commissioner Harding?
So I agree with commissioners on the conditions that may be made as discussed. I'm in favor of the project, and I would vote for it.
Okay, thanks, Sam. So rather than repeat what we've gone through here, I'm also in favor of the project. And I think we just need to make sure that we've got all of our details, and hopefully Guido's caught them all, and one of us can make a motion to include them all. So with that, is there any other discussion amongst the commission? I guess we've kind of lost Jude from this, but of those that are left, any other discussion questions?
No, none.
No.
No. Okay, great. Okay, so with that, I guess we'll move to see if we can get a motion made in a second on, on the project 851 Manor Way. Would someone like to attempt the motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do it. Recommend approval for design review application SC 21-0003 at 851, subject to detached findings and conditions with a modification removing condition four. And that staff and adding condition that staff make the appropriate adjustments that the second-story side setbacks match with the city's requirements of 17.5 feet or greater.
Did you want to add, before you do that, Michael? David, did you want to add something about where the oak tree is removed, that appropriate screening is put in that place?
Yeah, that staff could, yeah, okay. So in addition to removing condition number four, adding the condition that staff makes the modifications for 17.5 on the side setbacks, make sure that those fall into play, that with the removal of the item six, is that the, yeah, item six removal, that sufficient side lands, privacy landscaping on that side of the property is completed with staff, with conjunction of applicant and staff.
All right. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I've, it makes sense to me.
Okay, great. Michael, did you want to come back in a second?
Yeah, I'll second. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Then we'll, with that, we'll take a vote. Jude is out, so Michael?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
And Commissioner Harding?
Aye.
And Chair Bishop, also aye, project approved. Congratulations to the, to the owners and the architect, I guess, and the builder. So thank you. And with this, we'll move on to our next item, which is 444 Fur Lane. That's a, that's a multiple there. So with that, Sean, did you have a presentation for us on this project as well?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Chairman Ma. The project before you is designer view application for a remodel in addition to an existing two-story house. The project includes 2,794 square feet at the first story, in addition of 396 at the second story. There we go. This slide provides a schematic rendering of the proposed two-story addition. The upper schematic shows the two-story addition behind the primary ridge line, and then the lower, the lower rendering provides the view of the second story from the rear of the property, looking towards, towards the structure. The property is in a consistent character neighborhood as defined the city's residential design guidelines. The property is located on Fur, on Fur Lane. Homes in the neighborhood of simple massing, consistent setbacks, similar architectural elements. The houses in the neighborhood are a combination of one is two-story houses with simple architecture, with the exception of 485 Aspen Drive, which is a more modern-style home, contemporary modern-style home. The landscape along Fur Lane is varied, but mature trees are dominant in the landscape and along the property frontages, as is conveyed in the drawing before, in the, in the, in the context slide, it does convey, even in the drawings, the level of mature trees in the surrounding properties. The 794-square-foot addition is located along the northwest corner of the residence. It's outlined in the red hatched area that I've noted for you. And the 396-square-foot second-story addition is located above the one-story addition. The house is designed to be consistent with the development standards, does meet the setback standards. The existing house is a traditional ranch architectural-style home with hipped and gable roof forms, slow-scale forms and simple details. The lower-scale 794-square-foot first-story mass is located behind the northwest corner. The project is maintaining the gable and hipreforms and the low eve lines, which are appropriate in keeping with lower-scale nature of the home. Since the project will be keeping the overall character and forms, the overall bulk and mass of the house as viewed from the street will be maintained. Okay. Due to the downs, downslope nature of the lot, the project minimizes the bulk and scale of the second story along the street frontage by maintaining the low-scale appearance. The first-story plates are relatively low at eight foot six inches, consistent with the eight-foot nine to nine-foot plate heights found in the neighborhood for the majority of homes in the neighborhood. The height of the addition is, is below the maximum height permitted in the district. The addition of adequately screened, is, the addition is adequately screened with trees and various landscaping and numerous mature trees that line the side and the rear of the property. And overall, staff does believe the project, project does provide a low-scale structure that does fit into the surrounding neighborhood context. There are two new windows, one large three-panel window added for the bedroom suite with a three-foot sill height, one small window in a stairwell with a six-foot sill height, I'm sorry, a four-foot-six sill height, due to second-story setbacks of 28.2 feet and 32.75 feet to the side property lines. And with the high sill height, the proposed pitts of form tennefolium as evergreen screening, the existing mature trees and vegetation. Staff does believe it maintains a reasonable degree of privacy along the left property line. On the right-side elevation, you have a series of five windows, two single, two small single windows, and one three-panel window at a four-foot-six height, due to the second-story setback being between 109.25 to 122 and a half feet to the side property line with a combination of existing trees and vegetation. Staff does believe the right-side second-story windows provides reasonable degree of privacy for neighboring properties. Along the rear elevation, the balcony, you have a four-panel sliding door that exits off the balcony, sits out of the bedroom and onto a balcony. The balcony is 14 feet, one inch wide by five feet, seven inches deep. This balcony does exceed the maximum four-foot balcony recommendation under the design guidelines. Therefore, it could be considered more active in nature due to its depth. The applicant did provide a sightline study that shows existing roof forms, existing proposed trees on the side property lines, which gives hopefully the commission understanding of the overall context, the downward, the downward sloping nature of the property, and the diminished privacy impacts from the deck due to the existing mature trees and the significant setbacks from the rear deck to adjacent properties. Along the left-side property line, you have about 106, 106.5 feet to the right-side property line. You have 184 feet down to the rear property line with existing vegetation diminishing significant impacts to adjacent properties. There are 51 trees on the property, and they are, the applicant is proposing the removal of two. They are tree number 52 and 47 that are on the screen marked in red. The tree 52 or 47 is, let me just get this out of the way. Tree, the tree 47 is being removed due to being, due to being severely decayed at grade. And as a result, it is considered to be a potential hazard to public health and safety. And tree number 52 is being proposed for removal due to oak root fungus, which is also affecting the overall health of the tree. Staff does support the removal of these two trees due to the condition of, of the trees. There is an arborist report that is attached to the staff report. The site plan does reflect the project will preserve the existing shrubs, ground cover, and trees throughout the site, in addition to preserving existing vegetation. The project will be installing the three evergreen screening trees that are located along the left side of the structure and along the left property line. If the applicant does rehabilitate more than 2,500 square feet of landscaping, condition number five will require the project conform with the water-efficient landscape ordinance. Overall, staff does believe that the applicant has met the standards, the minimum requirements in regards to the city's intent for landscaping and street tree guidelines. Let me see if I can get this to move. The applicant has provided an outreach letter, and it is attached as attachment D. We did receive one additional letter of support, and that was forwarded to the commission earlier this week. And this concludes staff's presentation. Unless there are any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. So back to the commission. So back to the commission, any, any questions for Sean on the presentation?
None.
None.
No.
No.
Okay, Jude, you're back. I think I heard your voice. Yeah?
I am here.
All right, okay, great. All right. With no questions for the staff, then I guess we'll move forward with having the owner and the architect either give us a presentation if they have it or verbal description if they'd like of their, of their project.
Sure, my name is Bahi. I'm the architect. Mark and Mina are here listening in. They may say a few words after I speak. But I don't have a presentation. I think what Sean showed is pretty much what we have. The house is in a beautiful setting, as you might have noticed. Beautiful views. It's spread out, you know, very widely. And the way the bedrooms work right now, there are two bedroom suites on either end of the house, which is really great for some, but not quite enough. You know, for a family setting, so we, they, the owners, they're new. They purchased the house the last couple of years and they wanted to add more bedrooms, make it more livable for themselves. And the addition is quite modest. I mean, this property can hold seven thousand seven hundred fifty-five square feet of house. And what we're ending up with is four thousand eighty-one. So it's almost half of what could be allowed if a developer came in and rebuilt this house or a house on this property. So I think, you know, having the second stories that way back from the street is, you know, makes it not so intrusive. It's matching, fitting with the language of the house. You know, the same materials, we're going to continue the same window style material, everything. So hopefully it will blend in really well. And the privacy, I think, I did notice on the staff report, there was a mention of the three-foot sill height on the eastern. Elevation, but that's not true. I think it's, it's four foot six or more on all those windows, except, you know, in the backyard where there's absolutely no possible views of any neighbors. So I just wanted to correct that. That's the, Mark and Mina have been diligently talking or getting signatures from neighbors. They've shown the plans. They've walked through all the different screening that we've provided and have even offered the, for the neighbors to come by and take a look at the windows and, you know, to let them know that they'll be willing to even frost, you know, put frosty glass if, if the neighbors are not comfortable. So I think the neighbors, as far as I know, are in support. And I'll let Mark and Mina take over with their presentation.
Thank you, Bahi. Thank you everyone for being, and being here so late. Just wanted to quickly add to what Bahi was saying regarding speaking with neighbors. So we've met to talk to all the neighbors that who are adjacent, adjacent to our property, especially on the ones on the Fur Lane. So everyone that we spoke to gave us a support. One neighbor was not able to provide the letter of support to us. I believe he's really, really busy. He's over at four six six Fur Lane, but I did speak with him and we went over the plans. That he supports the plan. One neighbor on Aspen, which is the opposite end of where the project is, did not provide a, a letter for us, but he said that he's, he would take a look at it when he has a chance to. But I think he's also, he's been pretty busy as well. One other neighbor, we were not able to get hold of, although we left, we left him a note. It's the neighbor, neighbor by five, six, over at five, six, six, six algorithm. But overall, the ones that are closest to where the project is. The. One, one echo family, which is over at four hundred Fur Lane. They've definitely support our project. So I just want to mention that we are very concerned with our neighbors' privacy and the impact that this might have for them. So we will definitely continue to work with them if there, if they have any concerns in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Right, so do we have any, any questions from the commission at this point for the owner or the architect?
No, no questions.
No.
Frank, Frank, I had a quick question. Maybe this is for the applicant and staff. I know there's some language in our code about finished floor height above existing grade. You know, this house does not step down the hill, the, at least the addition doesn't. Some part of the existing house does, but it seems like this house is quite perched high above. And it's quite evident from the elevation on the cul-de-sac where you see this pop-up second story addition. I was just wondering if staff had a discussion with the applicant regarding that aspect of the code? And was there any follow-through with that?
Okay, good question.
So. Sorry, I'm trying to get back to my screen. So staff did look at, at the, you know, the section, I believe, that you're referring to is in regards to stories. And in regards to whether in effect there's a creation of a story below that raised surface. And, and per the definition for, for a story, the, the understory or under area beneath the first floor is not considered a story and it's not considered as, as a story per se for the structure. And so it wasn't a, you know, staff did not have the discussion with them. We didn't believe it met the definition of a basement. It didn't meet the definition of a story. It's not enclosed space. It's open on multiple sides. And so staff didn't believe it meant the actual definition to mandate the, the movement of that structure down to be at grade level.
That's interesting because on every findings and condition I've looked at over the past eight years, there's always some language about, you know, the floor, floor level is within sixteen to twenty-four inches or whatever that language is of the existing grade. So that's one of the major considerations we're always looking at when we look at new homes. So this is a case where, you know, it's, it's, I don't know, five, six feet out of the ground in the back. And in other jurisdictions, they would have made the applicant step the, down the hillside. Just wondering once again why, why this is different for us.
May I say something? Is that all right?
Who's speaking?
It's Bahi, the architect.
Sure, we could, Jude, we could direct the question to the architect. Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say that if you stepped into this house, there are so many steps from the right to the left and that, you know, this house is very difficult to maneuver around. On the, you know, if someone, you know, is an elderly or handicap, that one of my, one of the biggest concerns for the homeowner was that there was, there's hardly any bedroom area that is on the same level. So because we did discuss this and I, I did encourage them to lower the ground floor level and make it kind of a split level house. But they just didn't want to have so many steps. You know, they already have a lot going from the right side to the left side of the house. So all the bedrooms are now same level on the ground floor. And again, this is very unique property, but there is hardly any views or any impact to neighbors. So we didn't feel like it's. You know, it's a typical property with neighbors all around it that we should be so worried about the heights. We are still within the maximum allowable.
And Commissioner Carrick, so on, so I'm looking at the designer review section, which does, it's under the basement section of five point one-three of the design guidelines, which talks about first floor elevations, you know, shouldn't be, not be more than sixteen to twenty-two inches above existing natural grade with the basement below, which is the standard we somewhat have used with, with the basement below. It's very common in interior lots where we have ten thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots where the houses are ten feet from each other. But there's a big concern with the finished floor height because it creates the potential for privacy impacts, which is a driving factor for staff when we're raising the issue of sixteen to twenty-two inches or it's contributing to excessive bulk. This, this site was a little different because it had very substantial overall setbacks, both from the sides and from the lower grade. And so perceptions of bulk are perceived a little differently, at, at least if this was a home that was on a, on a flat terrain lot that had ten-foot setbacks between adjoining properties, then we'd probably look at it very differently because the perception of bulk and perception of privacy impacts would be very significant. But we did not have, staff at least did not believe that this was contributing to either significantly to bulk or contributing significantly to privacy impacts due to the setbacks and the overall tree and vegetation that's encompassing the entire site. So that's, that's part of at least the, the analysis and part of staff's perspective.
Okay, well. You've answered my question and it, it sounds like it was considered and given the unique character of the site, it was not considered to be a significant issue. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Jude and Sean. So any other questions at this point or shall we move on to? Ask the public? I, I think we did have at least one or two that wanted to speak here. Guido?
Yeah, I have a B Santos. Did you want to speak on this item? Mr. Santos?
Yes, I'm here. This is actually Mitch Day on the other homeowner for four sixty-six Fur Lane.
Go ahead, you have three minutes to speak, sir.
Okay, yes, I did meet with Mark Chiron. He was kind enough to reach out and, and go over the plans with us. We did have some concerns about the windows that face our property. We discussed the possibility of planting trees on our lot line, which we, we went over very carefully and, and we don't want that to be an option because we have a very limited view of the East Bay from our backyard and don't want that to be ever taken out. And then second consideration was, and I don't know how, how this is viewed, but I was offered the ability to come over during the construction. And the one window that faces our house does have a, a view into our backyard, which is where the master bedroom is. And I just want to ensure that there's no privacy issues with that. So he's offered to let me come over during the construction phase and offered to make any necessary changes at that point. So I just wanted that to be put on the record.
All right, thank you. Guido, are there other people from the public to speak?
Jessica three sixty.
She is, she's with me.
Okay.
She's not going to speak.
And the last one was four oh eight, eight oh seven, eight five nine one. That's the phone number listed.
That was actually Beth Santos as well. She was dialed in and we're on the computer as well.
Oh, okay, sounds good, sounds good.
Thank you.
Then everybody is accounted for, Chair Bishop.
All right, Guido, thank you. We will close the public comment section for this particular project. And we'll now have an internal discussion here with the, with the commission. And I'm going to go through the order reversed this time. So Sam, would you like to lead off the discussion on this particular project?
I'm in favor of the project. I think they've doing what they can with a kind of an unusual warrant of spaces and sizes and ups and downs and I, I'm in favor of it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Blockus?
Yeah, I don't have any real concerns given the uniqueness of the lot and the privacy. And, and well as the foliage, so I support the project.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ma?
Yeah, I, I like the, the design. I, I think that with the mature trees surrounding it, you know, this should be no privacy or minimum privacy concern. I, you know, on the other hand, I, I also see the section and the elevation. I, I do agree with, you know, Commissioner Kirk that somehow the elevation, it's, it doesn't look right, but the consider it's, it's a small addition and surrounded by all the tree and different levels of elevation changes. You know, the elevation, you know, to show on the surveys, a nine-foot drop difference between one end of the addition to another one. So this is a special circumstance, so I'm in favor of the, of the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Commissioner Kirk?
Well. I, I just find this one interesting that. You know. This guiding principle that we've observed on every single project, here is a case where we're not following it. And, you know, I, I, I think the, the thing that really makes me drawn to me is how it looks from the street. You know, it's very, the cul-de-sac sits high above. You look down on these roof lines and then all of a sudden you see this popped up, you know, addition in the back. Even though it's in the back, it's quite prominent and that clearly shows in all the views. So one way to reduce that, you know, at least from the street, is, you know, to step it down the hill. I'm not going to make the argument because this is clearly one of the most unique properties we've come across in Los Altos. And it's less of a concern because the property down below Woods Lane probably will never be developed. So there's really no impact. So the, so I'm, I'm happy that the applicant has agreed to work with the neighbor to alleviate any privacy impacts, but I think the privacy, the potential privacy impact would have been reduced by stepping this down the hill a little bit. And I know there's a desire to have everything on one level, but, you know, the primary living area outside is half a level down. So there's no connectivity between the addition and the exterior space other than a, a deck that sits, you know, I'm looking at it eight to nine feet out of the ground to start with. So I'm not going to vote against this project, but I, I find it an interesting one that pivots from how we typically view things.
Chair.
All right, thank you.
Chair Bishop.
Yes.
This happened a couple of times. Yeah, it looks like you're moving towards making a motion. So I just want, so Mr. Santos, one of the, the community members said he had worked something out with the applicant. And this has happened a couple of times where it's mentioned in the minutes, but it's not in the motion. So I leave it to you and the DRC if you want those to be worked out with the applicant and Mr. Santos or if you want it in the motion, because I can only really, if there's a dispute, something has to be in the motion or the approval letter. Otherwise, it's just a private matter between the, the neighbors. So I just wanted to point that out to the DRC. So, and we, Sean and I worked on a similar project where if you read the minutes, it was kind of referenced in the minutes, but it didn't make it into the motion. And then I kind of was in a difficult spot as a staff member, so.
Okay, I, I believe I understand that. Thank you, Guido. It's good to know that. With that, would one of the commissioners like to make a motion on this project?
I'll make, I'll, I'll make a motion. I, I move, recommend to approve project item number SC twenty-one. No, sorry, I got a wrong one. Oh, shoot, that's the. What's the? The project number SC 21. Yeah, 0004 at 444 Fur Lane. By accepting all the listed findings and conditions, I will stop report. And adding that the applicant worked with the neighbor. Is that the 10466 Fur Lane, right?
Correct.
To mitigate further privacy issue. During the, the construction, construction at a later phase.
Okay, does, is there a second for Michael's motion?
Second. Discussion on the motion?
Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Michael, can we be a little more clear saying something to the fact that prior to. Final of the project that the applicant shall provide written correspondence that the neighbor has agreed to. You know, the. Windows and any, has alleviated any privacy impact concerns. So, so get it in writing that could get to be shared with staff. So it's on record.
Okay. All right. So let me try again. So by accepting all the findings and conditions. And adding that the applicant worked with the neighbor and come up with the. Written. Agree correspondence prior to the final of the project to address the. The privacy issue raised by the windows.
Second.
So further discussion.
Further discussion, yes. Go ahead, go ahead, David.
So I, I, I think we're in a flip a coin. Situation where. How, how is that going to be enforced? The neighbor says, no, I don't like it. The applicant says, well, this is what we're proposing. Then the neighbor says, well, you need to do this and the applicant says, no, I can't do that because that's not what we agree. I think we need to have something a little bit.
Yeah.
More firm on what exact, you know, either we, we have the landscaping plan include. You know, some sort of reasonable screening on that side. Or we. Have the windows opaque or we reduce window sides or remove window sides or something like that. But I think. If we leave it up to both sides. Acting a good faith, sometimes when it gets down to it. That can't be worked out.
I agree. I, I, I think it's even better if this, this can be resolved during the. The permit stage before the building permits issue. Not doing the, not doing the construction or even before the final of the construction. Would that be okay? We, we, we can provide some direction. And then the final judgment will be, decision judgment will be, you know. By the, the staff. You know, there's a dispute, a minor dispute and details to leave this, leave those detail to be determined by the staff.
To the, to the chair. So if I may, you had a.
Please.
Similar project at 1540 Neston Way. Where it was a second story that was popping up with a window facing to the left with a neighbor raising concerns similar to this. And you, you provided specificity in the condition in regards to the changes you wanted made, just like you're advising. But then you also incorporated an opportunity if the neighbor would agree to modifications. Then prior to building permits in the middle, then they could make those changes. And so. There was an attempt in that project for the owner to work with the neighbor. It didn't come to a solution. And so then it reverted back to the original approved condition. So there is kind of a middle ground if you're willing to consider that and you've done that before. And staff has worked with the applicant to, to try to get to some other alternative, but then there's always a reverted condition we can go back to.
I see.
All right. Thank, thank you, Sean. Michael. Do you want to, we could have a discuss, we could have further discussion or would you like to try to make the motion again and see if we can. Actually get, get it approved?
I want to see any other input from a commissioner, other commissioner.
Okay.
Any further discussion input?
Well, I, I think we need to come down with what the. Base issue of the windows is and then. Because when I, in this is my own opinion, walked around and looked. I did not see. Any potential. You know, huge privacy issues with the application as it is. And so I'm just trying to get it to where we can either pass it or, you know, change something around in it, but have it a little bit. Have it more defined as what the solution will be. Otherwise. It could get messy.
Well, we could, we could just move forward with it as it is, right? That's what was Guido's other position on this. Leave it silent actually in the motion.
Correct.
That's the other way to deal with this.
Yes, I agree with David. Because when, when I was there, I mean, with all the mature tree, I mean, myself, I mean, maybe there's something I missed. But I personally, I don't see any much of potential, potential privacy issue. Even with the second floor and the balcony. So.
I would, any other, yeah, any other discussion?
No, maybe we could hear the resolution in its final form.
Well, my, my suggestion would be just approve designer, the application as it is, as it stands.
Right. I would agree with, I would agree with that.
I agree too. I agree too.
I think it's, I think it's very, I think it's, I think it's very difficult after the house is framed to have a neighbor stand. Where the window's been framed and tell you whether he likes it or not after the fact. That's.
Exactly. That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Yes.
So I'd like to.
So.
Make a, a new recommendation if I might.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So I'd like to make a recommendation to approve design review application SC 21 dash 0004. At 444 Fur Lane, subject to the existing findings and conditions.
Second.
Okay, with a, with a second, we'll, we'll take a vote on that.
We have a motion that we have to withdraw?
Yeah, I don't know. Do we, do we have to? I'm not sure we ever got it that far. Guido?
Well, you did second the first motion. So you said, you should probably rescind the first motion and then. Commissioner Block.
All right.
And re, restate his second motion.
Does the chair rescind the first motion? Is that the proper process?
Yes.
All right. So the chair will rescind the first motion and will ask Commissioner Blockus to make a replacement motion, please.
I motion to approve design review application SC 21 dash 0004. At 444 Fur Lane, subject to the attached findings and conditions.
Second.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take it from. The bottom this time again. Commissioner Harding.
I.
Commissioner Blockus.
I.
Commissioner Ma.
Hi.
Commissioner Kirk.
Somebody has spoken.
Was that an I?
Yeah, I guess it's an I, so.
Okay. Commissioner Bishop, I. So motion approved five to zero. Congratulations to the homeowner. All right. Thanks, everybody. See where we are here. All right. So I believe that was the last item. On tonight's agenda discussion. And so now we come down to. There my screen here. Commissioners reports and, and comments where I've missed. The last two meetings, I'm not current on this. Are there any reports or comments at this point?
None that I know of.
How about from the balance of the commission? Anyone else?
No. No.
And silence out there. Okay. All right, thank you. Next point is potential future agenda items, either from. City or from the commission.
Chair, Chair Bishop, so we have June 16th, that meeting has been canceled. We don't have enough items for that night or some other stuff got continued, but July 7th, we actually have one, two, three, four, five.
Wow.
Five?
Well, one of them is a 18 square foot addition to the second floor.
Okay.
The way Los Altos wrote its code, even one square foot on the second floor has to do DRC. So that one should be pretty. So.
Pretty short. All right. I, I had a, I had a question. Has there been any discussion as to when? The, the city council and the commissions will actually. Appear back at city hall or is this. Ring Central meeting continuing for an indefinite period?
We are in talks with the interim city manager about that. And actually the councilwoman's on the call. She might be able to speak, but for us, we, the only direction that we've been given is. Going back to city hall potentially as of August, mid, middle of August. I don't know if council member Inander wants to comment, so.
Um, I don't think I can really add anything to what you said, Guido, other than that I did see today. That the governor has agreed not to lift the directive. That we have that directs. Virtual meetings at the time that they lift the, you know, they do away with the tier system and all that that's supposed to happen on June 12th. So. Cities will continue to have flexibility according to what I heard today. As to how and when they migrate back toward other ways of, you know, the kind of the older ways of. Doing business, but I, I think you're right. I don't think anything will significant will change until at least August.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much for that.
A question on, a question along those lines and it explains some of my behavior tonight. You know, I think for all these years on the commission. I was so used to going down and getting a packet from the police department and, and using those drawings. To mark up and review and, you know, the, the kind of process has changed with the digital PDFs opening. Sometimes I don't print them out. I tend to miss more things than not. And that's part of the reason why I didn't recognize the, the architect on the one project tonight. So. I apologize to chair and staff. I would have refused myself earlier if I had. Seen that sooner, but is there a possibility of us getting our packages back? So, you know, our process can be a little smoother.
Ah, if that's the wish of the commission, yes, that's fine. Obviously it's less staff time if it's all digital, but if that's the will of the DRC, we can certainly make that work. So.
It, it does make a big difference to have the hard copy and. It's just, it's hard. I'm, I'm not as technical as some of the others and it's just hard with my equipment to, to really be able to. See things.
Okay.
Hard copies, I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had one issue with Fur Lane, the design plans, downloading and printing them. For some reason they wouldn't print in landscape mode or whatever. But I haven't had any issues. I print about it. They are small. But then I, I kind of read through everything ahead of time on my computer with the plans in hand and then I. Write down whatever questions I have when I go out to see the property. But having them. You know. To pick up is, is nice, but you know, sometimes you just don't have the time to get downtown to, to do it. So it's also real convenient to. Do it from online.
Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe each individual commissioner, if you want to email me separately and give me your preference. You prefer a hard copy and let me know and then if on the admin can accommodate you and then we'll. We can start that over, start that up again, but let me know because we would, we would need to get. Stuff from the applicant to make that happen.
Right. So let me just say Harding, yes, on a hard copy.
And you know, and to David, David's point, sometimes what the applicant prints is a better quality and clearer. And when, you know, I have a, you know, good copiers at, at my office and I do tend to print things out, but sometimes. The graphics aren't as good as, as it is coming from the original. Owner or architect. So.
Yeah. Well, that.
Especially color boards and other things. Sometimes that gets lost.
Okay. All right. Well, I've got two who want the hard copy. That's fine. The hard.
I agree. Make me three. I, I want a hard copy too.
Sounds good.
Yep.
I think Frank wants ones too. Frank, do you want one?
Sure. I mean, I, I always appreciated the hard copy. I, I would ask for both actually that we can. If we're there, we can pick them up. And like David mentioned, I tend to write my notes actually on the drawings when I have them. So that would be great, but sometimes I can't be there and I operate from my, my, my Mac. And that's why we need in, in both formats still.
Sounds good. All right. We'll make that happen.
Thanks.
We, one more, one more question. I'm not sure.
Okay.
I, I actually, yeah, sorry, Chair. So I actually found that recently is more request from the staff that. We email or, or give the applicants a heads up by making a kind of appointment or timeframe for visiting the property. I mean, do that bother any of you guys? I mean, it's, it's like sometime I forgot and then, you know, I try to group them together. You know, to fit my schedule and it's today I will try to go one of the, the property and find the house lock. Oh, and I forgot. So, oh yeah, that's right. We're supposed to notify the applicant. I mean, that's kind of inconvenient. I'm not sure what you guys think.
Yeah, I, I agree. And several times when I have had appointments, if that's right, were, they weren't there. So it was like, you know, I'm going out of my way. And, you know, took my time where I couldn't. See, get around the property. So I would, I preferred it the other way, which was that they, the. Property is notified that you must have the dog in the yard and locked and so forth.
What, so what was the old practice? Cause. Just so I understand.
Hey, I mean.
What was?
Well, that was the old practice is that you, you didn't have to make an appointment. You. You know, it was posted and the posting said that representatives of the city would or could or will. Come to review the project, not the inside, but the outside.
Within, within a week of the DRC hearing or three or four days or?
You know, I don't know the time, but I'd say it's at least a week.
A week? Okay.
Because usually, usually the agenda is available the Friday prior to that meeting, right?
Yeah.
So, so by the time we, sometime we get on Friday, I mean, for me, by the time I get off Friday, I mean, I'm not sure about weekend, but I usually. Visit during the, the following Monday, just the two, the day before or the day or the day, two days before. Only three, those three days timeframe and doing the daytime and that's a pretty short of time. I mean, I'm not sure about you guys, I mean, but that's for me, only within the few days before the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I, that's what I do too. I try to go not on the weekend, but Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Well, the thing that. That typically can come up is if you have the appointment, sometimes the applicant thinks that. Is a invitation to have a discussion about their project and, you know, what do you think? Is it going to pass? Is it not going to pass? I mean. You know, that type of thing. So I, I prefer not to have a, you know. Way back when, when it all first started, we would go knock on the door. If no one was there, we'd leave a, a card in the door and then go. You know, into the side yard and walk the exterior of the property. With today's technology, everyone's got a ring. So you know who it is. So I'm sticking my card next to the ring. So they know who, who I am. And you know, here I am. And, and, and go through, but yeah, they have the appointment. I mean, it's not a big deal to me. The only thing that I don't like it. With an appointment is the potential that the applicant thinks. Then that's time that we can have a discussion about their project, which is something I really don't want to do. I want. I want to wait until we are, you know, in the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, Guido, another question, because you were looking at the materials and process of different signage and postings and so forth. And, because that would, you know, fall in line with this discussion as well. Where are you on that?
Yeah, so I've updated the handout to make it in line with what the DRC requested. Make it a all-weather material, two by three, within three feet of the property. And we've actually started to issue that directive to applicants within the last two weeks.
Okay.
Chair, Chair.
Any other, any other discussion or can we adjourn the meeting?
Chair Bishop, can I just say one thing? First of all, I want to congratulate former Chair Michael Ma on a great job of running these meetings this past year. Michael, you did an outstanding job and you kept things flowing. And I also want to acknowledge that I think Frank, if anything, if the rest of the year is going to be like your meeting tonight, I think things are going to move smoothly. And once again, I appreciate, appreciate moving things in a timely manner. Saying that, it's past nine o'clock for three items. But to me, tonight went really smoothly. And thanks again for doing such a great job.
Okay. See you all.
Thank you, everyone. Bye.
Thanks, Guido.
Let's adjourn the meeting. All right. Thank you.